Yes.
I don't know.
There was someone up there when I came in.
You guys have a meeting and you're here for this, right?
Yeah.
Usually got nobody here, I figured. You may wanna come over here to the side so you can see the presentation, okay? Okay. So yours.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. Sorry for the confusion. I had no idea we were downstairs and upstairs, but here we are. So we have a, just a single item on the agenda tonight, and that is the discussion concerning the Sincarca project and compliance issues with regard to that project. So we have Henry and Jack.
Yeah, I'm here Paula.
Okay, and, and John.
And Peter.
Yeah, I'm here Paula.
I'm trying to figure out Zoom attendance. Okay, Don, Jack, Henry, okay.
And Angelica's up there.
Okay, alright. So before we get into that conversation, I wanted to make sure it's that we clarify the purpose of the conversation tonight with the, with the solar project. As you all know, there have been some compliance issues that have been identified with regard to the Sincarca project. And Henry and Chip have been very much involved in both the site inspection aspect of this and some conversations with Sincarca about those issues. The immediate issue is that a number of those compliance issues are required to be addressed before any kind of certificate of Mr. Occupancy can be issued. And so it is time sensitive in that respect. Because this is a more complicated project than we very often see before the board, it seemed to make sense in this case for the code enforcement officer in the planning board to collaborate on some of those issues. The planning board was responsible for placing conditions on the approval for the project. Some of those were rather unusual because of the nature of the project. And so I'm viewing this as a collaborative discussion among all three parties. Chip, the planning board, and Sincarca to talk about the conditions on the permit, about compliance issues, and to collaborate on the path forward. But I do want to stress that the planning board does not have a formal role in determining compliance. That's strictly within the code enforcement officers realm. And Chip will be the one ultimately who makes that determination. But again, because of the nature of some of the conditions and the complexities of this project, we did feel that it would be appropriate to have this conversation and have a discussion and collaborate on those issues. We won't be taking any formal action on this project tonight. There won't be a vote or anything of that sort. And so all planning board members, alternates or otherwise, are certainly encouraged and invited to participate fully in the conversation. This would be importantly, you know, an informational exchange and discussion. So we do have is there more than one Sincarca representative?
Introduce yourself, please.
Yes, I'm Mike Atkinson. I know I've spoken with many of you before. Nice to see you all again. I'm joined tonight by Josh Naridan, our construction project manager on this project. I know I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago when I spoke before you at another meeting, but we're incredibly apologetic about the breakdown in communication that happened between us and our EPC construction company. And you all, of course, and you know, since, since we found out about that lapse of communication, we've done everything we can to be as responsive as possible and, you know, really looking forward to working through the rest of these conditions with you all tonight and in the, in the coming weeks.
Okay, thanks.
We have him introduce, could you introduce which part of Sincarca you are with and the different members? There's, there's three different branches we've been dealing with.
Um, yes, so like, like many, many companies, we have different departments. I'm on the development side, so I was a part of those conversations back when we got our original site plan approval a few years ago. My role is to get the projects through the permitting process and through the interconnection process with the utility and get them ready to be built. And then Josh and his team will hire a local construction firm to actually build, build the project. So Josh's role is to manage those, those contractors. And I believe the third arm you would have met was not actually part of Sincarca. It was a construction company that we had hired to build the project. But once we are operational, you will be dealing with a third arm of Sincarca, and that is our asset management team. The folks who are responsible for managing the project through its, its operational years, handling taxes and rent payments to the landowners, making sure everything regarding the ongoing day-to-day operations are in compliance.
Thank you.
I know you have attended briefly at an earlier meeting. Would it be helpful to you if planning board members introduced themselves to you? Those that are in attendance tonight?
Sure, yeah, and I know I've spoken with Henry and Jack before. Don, you seem familiar as well, perhaps from a few years ago, but yeah, it'd be helpful if the folks in the room can introduce themselves.
Paula Clark, I chair the planning board. Jack?
This is Jack. On Zoom.
Jack is the vice chair. Don?
Yeah, hi, Don Witherell, and yes, I was involved in the, in the last round, so hello again.
Henry? Well, he knows you, but.
Yeah. Hey, Mike, nice to see you again, and Josh, nice to meet you in person.
Hi, Brandon.
Hi, Josh and Mike, I'm George O'Connor. Somewhat new to the planning board, but a pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well, George.
John?
John Mitchell, I was just appointed a few weeks ago.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm Peter Bickerman, like a couple of these fellows, I was just appointed in July.
Also, congratulations, few, few new faces.
And before we get started with the conversation, I had also called Jerry Gley, who is representing the Conservation Commission, which had, and Bruce as well, I assume that
We have actually four members here.
Okay, okay, alright, so we have most of the Conservation Commission.
Better attendance here than at our own meetings.
Because they had a particular interest in a number of different aspects of this project, and I had put a call into Jerry and invited him to attend. So we have Bruce Hunter, Jerry Gley, and
Linnea Puns.
Jordan Shaw.
So I think that's everybody. So, I have two things. As you all know, a detailed site inspection was conducted by Chip and Henry earlier in August, and a report was prepared that was distributed to everybody with the findings of that report. And I think that the best way to proceed would, you know, be to let Chip and Henry lead us through those compliance issues, since you've been dealing most directly with them. And I would mention for everybody else that there really are two general, two broad categories of compliance issues in front of us. There are specific conditions that the planning board placed on the approval. And then in addition, there are the terms of the application that the planning board approved. And so some of the issues that have come up were determined to be compliance issues because there were aspects of this that were not consistent with the application that was approved. So again, two different types of compliance issues, specific conditions, and then those issues that are raised by the application content. So, Chip, what's the best way to move through this? Should we use Henry, the inspection report and the way in which you had the issues listed, or do you want to come out, you want to come out at a different way?
Do you, Henry?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good way to go, Mike, don't you think? I mean, I, I think it's a good way to kind of walk through it. I will say that since that, since that first of all, does everybody have that document? Have you seen it on the board? I know Josh and Mike have seen it.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay. The It's in your email, and it looks like Chip's got it there on the table for some folks who may not have seen it. The, and, and I'll just say, the, the purpose of this is not to be difficult. It was, it was merely because we are, we were desired, as Michael said earlier, you know, we were, we were desired to, to moving forward towards, you know, that they're getting close to completing this project, and we want to make sure that Chip is armed with the right information and that we have the, all the, all the various boxes ticked from the town's perspective with respect to our expectations. And, and since, since this site visit occurred, I have spoken with Michael directly. And I'll, I'll just, I'll say that Sincarca has been very communicative, and I think Chip would agree with that since then, and we've had open and positive dialogue, and so it's great that they're here tonight. And this is also not supposed to be something that prevents the project from occurring. I think our objective is to make sure that this project is completed successfully in a, an efficient time manner in accordance with the developer and the landowner's wishes. But also, it does need to tick the boxes that are required of the project. And I have expectations. Is that fair Paula? Is that okay to say that?
So I was gonna ask you, Henry, if you thought it made sense to, there are several administrative compliance issues, and then there are a number of field issues, offsite issues.
Right, right, so I think, I think maybe we should start with the well, we can start with, with either, there's sort of the onsite and the offsite, the administrative versus the onsite stuff.
This is Jack. Do we want to deal with the issues that the Conservation Committee is concerned with first?
And, and those are primarily those offsite issues.
Yeah, so let's, so let's start with the offsite, non-structural stuff. Sorry, Josh, you'll have to wait for a little longer. So the first, well, there's two, well, I think there are two issues that are still outstanding. And there may be more Paula that you, you would like to raise, or other board members would like to raise?
The next.
Those, those two issues, if you turn to the last page of the, of the document, you'll see, you'll see them as, as an offsite recommendation. Those two issues are resolution of our, you know, the community solar, quote-unquote, community solar marketing and Reedfield residence sign up to this project, which was discussed during the application process. And then the second issue is the agricultural conservation easement documents of which two were provided, one, one between, one for the remainder of the non-developed solar parcel, so that's about ninety-ish acres between the property owner and the main farmland trust. And then a second document, which is related to the actual solar development acreage of around twenty acres. So those are the administrative issues. The first and perhaps easier one is, well, they're probably both quite easy, but the, the community, the Reedfield residence sign up, I think, Michael, it's fair to say that when we talked, I now understand that you had, you had contracted with, and this is not a criticism, it's just an object, it's just a fact, there's a third-party company, I guess, that did some marketing. It was not specifically identified in that marketing that this was for Reedfield or for this particular project, but rather for more, you know, solar signup projects in general. And therefore, and therefore perhaps not obvious to our community that this was related to this project, but it was commissioned by Sincarca at some point. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, we, we believe we have mailed through a third party, like you said, to the majority of residents in the town. I understand that the, the board had higher hopes for how this would be marketed to residents. We're happy to remedy that situation. The, I think the best path forward would be a simply a, a re-mail to the folks. We're happy to have more customers. But we would ask that the planning board draft a letter that could be included in that mailing so that folks know that it's, it's not just another, you know, community solar developer and that it does have the support of the town. We think that would go a long way. It's something that we've done before in other towns and has been really helpful in, in gaining, gaining support from the community when they see that the, the town is is signing off on the project as well and hoping to support it.
Is there not a way for you to re-identify that in the mailing to let people know?
We, we, yeah, certainly, we can, we can absolutely identify as Reed, Reedfield Solar and have, have a you know, specific photo of the, of the solar project. It would just be helpful to also have, you know, a, a letter from, from the planning board or town as well.
What about if we were able to maybe put something in our town newsletter as well, something like that, you know, with the, with the, with the I don't think the town can support a private project like that, you know, specifically, probably, but I think we can what we, I think what you're suggesting though, Mike, seems to make sense to what we have talked about, which is making a more, more targeted and concrete effort to, 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 to target this specific project to the community, which is what was proposed in the application. So that's really, I think, what we're looking for, and I think
There's some concerns raised on the part of the town about, you know, advocating for a particular project. We would need to talk about, you know, the town's role in that certainly.
Sure, but we
Have you received any reports of technical glitches from consumers who might want to sign up, who might have responded to the first solicitation and weren't able actually to get signed on to the project?
I, I haven't heard of any directly, but I've, I've heard through Chip and Henry that there are folks in Reedfield who have attempted to sign up on the Reedfield project, but through our website, they were not, they were not able to. I'm telling you now, you can give anyone in the town of Reedfield my email address or my cellphone number, and I will personally make sure that they are signed up on this particular project. But you are correct, if you go to our website, the project is, is full in our, in our system, and, and folks cannot sign up directly through our website. But folks in Reedfield will have an opportunity to be on this project if they would like to be.
So if you sent out a mailing to residents like you did before, the fifteen hundred mailers, and identified this is Reedfield Solar and people can sign up, will they be able to sign up?
Yes, that's, that is something we're going to fix before we send, send out the letters, yes. I don't, I don't, I don't know the logistics of if it can be fixed on our website, or if we'll have to provide a special email address to folks that they can, that they can contact and get, walk through that signup process. I don't think it'll, I think it'll actually be easier to have someone help them through the process than to go to our website and, and do it on their own. But yeah, if we send out a letter, there will, there will be a way other than just directing them to our website that won't allow them to, to sign up.
So I think from a, from a, from a, you know, have you completed the task or not, I think, perspective, I think what we'd be, what I would propose, we would be looking for is that mailer to be created and mailed. You know, and then, and then once it's out there in the public, peoples, and obviously people will start signing up. But, or some people may obviously won't, and some people, whoever chooses to can, but, but the, the concept, you know, the concern from the board is that the, the, that the opportunity to be able to do that is, is pretty obvious, and as you just described, sounds, sounds to me acceptable. I don't know whether I remember, but that seems
Would the board like to approve that, that mailer prior to it being sent out?
I, I think it would be helpful for either Chip to take a look at it, or, or, or the board before it's sent, just to ensure that, you know, it has the information that they're expecting.
If I could make a suggestion, we've talked about this before, and I heard it mentioned earlier. We do have a mailing, we have the messenger, what do we call it, messenger?
Messenger.
Messenger, which is a town publication, seeing as we don't have a newspaper or a town blog. This messenger is printed up every month. It would be a real crush, if you can do it though. If you could get something in by Monday, August twenty eighth, we could have that included in the messenger, and that would be a big step forward in my mind to have that. Because many of the people in town come in to get that, or pick it up at the transfer station or at the local stores. So that's, I'm holding that out to you. If you'd like to do something quickly, if you can manage it, get it to me by the twenty eighth, and we can get it in that town-wide publication.
But we're still talking about an individual mailing to the fifteen
That too.
Parcels.
And so maybe the messenger piece would talk about the fact that there will be a mailer that provides the opportunity for something.
So in general, just you know, more public outreach, Mike, as we've discussed before. And I think that's what we're looking for.
Is is the, the publication a town-owned publication?
Yes.
Okay, but we, we are, we are able to, to be in it, just not have the support of the town in it as well. Is that correct? There wouldn't be anything from prohibiting us as a private company from posting in that publication?
I don't think so. We have businesses that put things in there quite often.
Okay.
You know, things like that.
Yeah.
It's, you know, town advocacy for a private project, and if this was put more in the form of a, you know, a notification to people that they can expect to see a mailer about this topic. I don't think we'd cross that one.
And if you go into the yield section in, in the messenger, so I think it'd be a good idea.
So I think that, so I think that this is all very positive, Michael, I think this is, but I think if you can attempt to meet that deadline next week, then it looks pretty tight, but, but also then the mailer to follow thereafter. And also on the schedule of your choosing, that's, that's, you know, meets your, meets your desires, I think is, is you know, and I think Paula's suggestion's good about having it, and your suggestion too, about having it checked by the town, I think that would be you know, just reviewed by Chip even, just to make sure it includes the necessary information. Anyway, that's what we're looking for, and I think you've answered, answered that one well.
Okay.
The other, shall we move on to the next one?
Yes.
So the next issue then is the, is the resolution of the agricultural easements, plural. And perhaps I, I don't know if it'd be to have those in front of them, but there are two, right? One, well, two, two documents, I don't know if it's two easements, but two documents. One is related to the remainder, the remaining of the, the property, which looks like it has been conveyed. I don't know, Chip, if if the town council looked at it or not, I, I don't, I don't know that information, but perhaps others have more comment on it. My perception is that one of the documents, and Mike can probably address this too. The, the expectation was that in, in the, in the record of decision is that the, the remaining acreage, which in, in its entirety would be put into permanent agricultural easement, which I believe it has, and maybe Jerry can, or the Conservation Board can comment on that too, but the, 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 the second expectation is that the remaining parcel, the, the development is on the twenty acres, approximately twenty acres, would be would be put into the same or a conservation easement, agricultural conservation easement, under the same sort of expectation of permanent agricultural easement, when the solar development is completed slash, you know, ended, decommissioned, whatever the right word is you'd like to use. My, my read on it, and perhaps I'm not, I'm not, certainly not a legal expert in that area, but it did not look like that was accomplished in the, in the second document, but when I talked to Michael, he did have a nice explanation for it. So maybe I'll be quiet and let him explain the lack of that language in the second document.
Yeah, so the, the first document was executed a while ago, and that, that was simply the main farmland trust purchasing the conservation rights to the acreage that's not being used for solar. Our, our landowner was extremely helpful and gracious in, in working with Main Farmland Trust to put all of that, I think, you know, seventy-plus acres and, and, and some area around the structures into that conservation easement. That's, that's a done deal with Main Farmland Trust. And it's, it's, the, the conservation rights are already sold off. However, Main Farmland Trust, and I, I have an, an email from them stating this, if you need to see it, but Main Farmland Trust was not willing to purchase future rights for conservation for a period of time in the future that was not yet known. So we hired a local main real estate expert who advised us that probably the best path forward was to place a deed restriction on that remaining, on that twenty acres being used for solar, that essentially it has two future options for use. Solar energy production until it's decommissioned, or agriculture, or businesses related to agriculture, like hayrides and corn mazes and pumpkin patches, things that the property owner specifically wanted to leave in that document to not you know, completely close the door on those items. So essentially what that document is accomplishes is restricts all other uses of the property in the future besides the solar or things that would be, in our opinion, conservation, conservation-type uses. Has, has Kristen Collins, the, the town attorney, reviewed the document at all?
My knowledge well, I know she is. Well, I know she is this week, but these weren't forwarded to her earlier, correct? Okay, um, and I do think that's necessary, um, I think we need her review on both of these documents, particularly the um. Uh, the protective covenant document, the more recent one. And um I do have a specific question about that one and maybe, maybe you can respond to this, but. As I read that second paragraph, the exception for solar facility, it strikes me that. Um, this anticipates. An unlimited amount of time during which. The property, the twenty acres might be used for solar projects. And so that suggests to me that uh when the Sincarpa project is finished, uh, when it's decommissioned. That given this language, another solar company could theoretically use that same property for another solar project. I don't think that was the intent of the planning board and I think we were looking at it in a more limited way. You know, understanding of course that, you know, at some point perhaps the lease could be transferred. Uh, during the life of this project and, and that certainly should be accommodated. But that, that's my, that's my concern, my issue with this and. Um, I invite your response or anybody else's comment on that issue, but that's, that's kind of the way I read it.
Um, yeah, and, and that, that is, that is the case, uh, just frank, frankly speaking, um. Our property owner requested that, um, you know, he, he have the right after. Um, after this, this lease to enter into another lease for solar. Uh, I believe that it, it's written that once it's decommissioned. There is not the option for another lease, I could be mistaken, uh, but this was all done. With, with the language in the condition in mind and our, our real estate attorney that drafted this. Ad- advised us that it, it met the condition as, as written. Um, and there was no, no requirement that this be held strictly to, uh, or the. The ability for solar to be on the land was held strictly to our, our lease. Um, and that's, that's, you know, I, I invite feedback from, from Kristen Collins. Um. But that, that, that's our, our position there, that it, it is, um, it is in line with the condition.
And it, you know, and I don't, I don't think that the, the condition um on the approval is crystal clear, but one piece that I look at specifically is that. It says that the applicant shall, prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, provide assurances. That when the twenty acre site is no longer used for solar energy production. And I mean, that, that, we're looking for that assurance from the applicant, which at this point is Sincarpa and um. Um, that's quite specific to me, that links, that links the condition to the applicant and to the present project. But um, you know, we do, as we mentioned, need to have uh town council look at that document. And we need to have that conversation with her, I think.
Right, and, and that, that, that's what we're holding on, on to there and, and what the, the landowner, um, you know, had, had. Reference to me as well is that when it's no longer being used for solar energy production. Which uh another lease would still allow for solar energy production and what we are doing. To provide assurances is drafting this letter to have the landowner execute. And then record in the registry of deeds so that it is tied to the property. For all future owners that there are two uses for this property, continue, continue solar. Or, or, or agriculture. Uh, and so that's how we're providing the assurances, is, is getting, getting this, that, getting that document drafted and, and signed and recorded.
Was the attorney, the, the attorney that you. Was that attorney involved in this, in this letter?
In um, what letter?
The, 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 the most recent. Document that you're referring to, that it would be, once it's no longer used for solar, it would be used for agricultural.
Hmm, we, we, yeah, that, that was, that was drafted by a, a local real estate attorney.
So I wonder if it would be most efficient for that attorney to talk to the town attorney.
I'm, I, I wo- would encourage that, I, I, I believe that this. That this document meets, meets all of the requirements that it should and I, I would, I would love to, to set up a meeting between, between the, the two attorneys.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, it. The confirmation commission and I were not directly involved in all the planning board's deliberation, we were involved in suggesting. The idea of the easement and had communication with the developer, with Maine Farmland Trust. And I will say, our understanding at that time is that it could remain. In solar beyond the life of this project. Again, you may have decided otherwise, I don't want to suggest that you did, but uh that was part of the understanding that if. You know, our understanding that, you know, solar obviously has positive environmental benefits and that if the project. Could extend further, that was in keeping with the, the spirit of. Um, um, it's conservation commission was saying that it'd be, but once it, solar is done, then it would. Sort of be encompassed in agricultural infrastructure.
Thanks for that, Jerry, that's all.
Thank you, Jerry, I, I owe you a beer, thank you.
You know, just want to be. Clear that that is something that happened early on and then it sort of went through your work.
And you know, and I don't recall that the planning board had a specific discussion around that issue. You know, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, what my general understanding was and what the words in the, in the commission are, but. I don't recall a specific conversation about that.
I can sort of provide someone setting agents at that, that time, um, that I think will.
I'm a lawyer, state lawyer, uh, but looking, I, I did read these documents and I. This is a covenant that runs with the land, it doesn't preclude or interfere with the regulatory ability of. The planning board or any other agency to look at a new project if one were proposed down the road. It doesn't give automatic rights to continue a use. But it, nor does it, however, nor did anything else prevent a future use. If it meets regulatory criteria, that's why I, I look at it.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be worth having uh the, a council look at it, um. My, my thoughts were more along what Paula was uh thinking, um. When it was originally discussed, but I don't, I don't disagree with Jerry's perspective either, I mean, I think it's a reasonable. A reasonable approach, um, but I would, I would just note that, you know, any. Any change in, in the development, whether it was a new development or, you know, it would be a, you know, as, as uh we were just discussing, it would be. Uh, subject to the, you know, the current ordinance at that time. Um, you know, the, it's not in a perpetuity, so you know, it would be subject to a different set of uh ordinance rules. Uh, most likely at that, at that time in the future. Um, so, I mean, I think that's. Also the case, I, I, I don't read it the same way, my personal read on it, Paula, is that it, it, it has, it runs with the applicant. Uh, the applicants use the applicant's uh timeframe, but uh, but I could be convinced otherwise by an attorney, so.
Have that conversation with, with Kristen and see what her. Her thoughts, um, you know, she needs to look at that document anyway and um, so we can have that.
Great.
Um, the, the other um. Kind of administrative uh type of issue, the non-site issue that I wanted to raise is that. Um, as most, you know, there's another uh potential solar project pending uh in Reed Field. Uh, the application is um, is right there, um, and. Um, in taking a, you know, an early look at that, one of the issues that um, um. Came to our attention, became kind of a point of focus is the relatively new state law with regard to decommissioning. And so I did have a, a couple of questions for Sincarpa about that, first of all, are you aware of that law and secondly. Um, have you been in touch with the E P about it because. My reading is that this project would require the E P approval under this new decommission law.
Yes, we have that approval from the D E P.
You have that approval?
I believe so, yeah. I did, did a, did a whole, whole bunch of them right after they passed that law, but yes, we, we have. We have that.
Information to us and, and the reason I'm asking for it is that, you know, the town also asked for. Uh, decommissioning information and a, you know, financial assurance mechanism to go along with it. And part of my interest is in understanding if those two decommissioning packages are consistent or not. Um, if, you know, the E P approves something different than we did and, and so forth. And so it'd be very helpful to see that approval, um, if you could provide it.
I, yeah, I believe this, this was all shared with someone at the town when we got the approval, um. And in, in the effort to, to move things along, can I, can, can we follow up about this at, at another time? I, I had thought this was all taken care of, um, so I, I have to go back through my emails.
When would, when would I see?
Well, I don't know when they would have sent it, um.
Follow up and send the items.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I have one question about the, the future of use and this is probably mainly for planning board members. Um, that this occurred before I was here, but. Um. It seemed to be from statements that were made earlier that there was some concern about. Um, the future of use of whether it was compatible with, with the um. Uh, the decision that the board made a few years ago and I'm just wondering if. Uh, if there's a distinction between um the requirement in the. Uh, planning board decision that the site we convey is an agricultural conservation easement or similar thereto. If that language is. Is equal to or, or will cover, um. What is, what is in the new declaration of protective covenants document, which talks about, um. Uh, the covenant area shall be used only for agriculture, agricultural recreation. Apple picking, corn mazes, forestry or conservation, uh, you know, forestry, apple picking. Corn mazes. Agricultural rec- uh recreation. Is that, does that fit into similar thereto from what the planning board's decision was and I didn't know whether that was an issue. Uh, that people had in their minds when they, when they were raising this or not. In other words, well, I guess what I'm, to shorten, what I'm trying to say is. Is the proposed, the proposal in, or, or what's in the protective covenants in terms of doing agricultural types of development? Uh, the apple picking and corn mazes for forestry, is that going to be copacetic with a um agricultural conservation?
You know, that, that, that is probably another good question for the town attorney.
Yeah.
Uh, there are definitions of, now there is a, um, there's a definition state law for um agricultural activities. And I assume that that would be the relevant definition here and it's, it's quite expansive. I can't tell if it includes corn mazes, um, probably not, but, but there is such a definition and I assume that that's in part what she would be looking to. Anybody else have thoughts on, on John's? Comment?
I, I would just say that Maine Farmland Trust easements typically do allow those sorts of agribusiness, agri tourism. Have that activities in general.
I, I promise, I, I really did my homework on, on this one. I think you, I think you'll be pleased with Kristen's response.
So you'll get us the, you'll get us the D E P permit for the decommissioning plan?
Uh, yes, yeah, and I, I wanna, I wanna uh go through my emails, I mean, this would have happened, uh, you know. Probably. Mid twenty twenty two, um, I want to find out uh when it was provided. Uh, and, and all that stuff, but yes, I can, I can get all of that over to you.
Okay, thanks.
Were there other administrative things, Paula?
Yeah, I think, um, I think that's probably the end of the administrative list, um, so if you want to turn to the. On-site issue. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments, issues about the administrative things at all before we move on? Anything, okay, all right, Henry.
So, so I'm just trying to move it along so we're not here all night, but this is a great discussion. Um, so when we, uh. When we, when we say compliance issues, non-compliance issues, I think, you know, just for the sake of it, you know, we're not. We're not looking at a specific uh state statute, what we say there is. Uh, is specifically related to um, to the town's uh expectations of the per- of the permitting and the, and the approval process. As well as, you know, other, other general observations that would be typical for our land use. Uh, ordinance review and expectations of any construction project regardless of whether it's solar or. Uh, a subdivision or anything. Um. So we, uh, Chip and I took a walk around, um. Um, there were five categories, I suppose, of. Things that were different than um what our expectations were, you can see them on page, whatever it is, page two, I think, page three. Or, um, and I've already walked through these with Michael and Josh has provided some response, initial response, which you've all seen. Um, there are, uh, but I'd like to just kind of go through them and maybe talk about each one, just sort of like we did the other ones, I think that's probably the best, best way to do it. Um, so let's start with the, uh, let's start with the, uh, the first one, which is probably the biggest one. Um, which, well, maybe it's not, but I thought it was, um. Which is the uh erosion and sedimentation control or rather lack thereof. Um, uh, during the construction and, and at the, on the project site. Um, the permit application clearly, clearly has, uh. Measures which would be taken, uh, there's expectations from the D E P that things would be done in a certain way and. Um, again, I'm not trying to be accusatory, Josh or Michael, that's not the intent. It's just based upon the observations that we had when we were there at the site. Um, you know, we didn't see, we didn't see many of these measures were in place, um, and we were seeing significant runoff. Uh, including into the wetlands and um, as you know, we've had a very wet summer, I mean, Chip and I were. Mucking it through some of the mud, it was very, very muddy, um, the. The, um, I'm recognizing, of course, that is, it is also an agricultural field or a former agricultural field, so you know, you don't, you don't, you know, it's, it's not. Uh, hard standing in any way, so keeping, keeping that in perspective in mind. Not out to get you here, but uh, you know, there, we didn't see one silt fence anywhere. On the property, period, nowhere. And that's clearly a requirement, um, in the permit and we just, you know, I don't. You know, I'm not sure what to say about that, that's just the fact. Um, the, uh, we also noted that there was some. You know, due to the rainfall, I'm sure Josh, over this, over the summer, that's been very, very high. There was some significant erosion um during some of your, in your construction alleys and other areas of the property which were. Used obviously for construction, um, um, probably much more so than normal because of that. We did see scenarios of uh some oil staining and some other uh issues uh in that area and some of those areas which were noted. Um, and you know, basically there would, it, it, it was a, it, it was not the prettiest lo- the situation and. Um, and I know, uh, in, in credit to you, I know you have taken measures since then. Um, to, to at least try to stabilize the site a little bit, so that's where, I guess that's where we're at, uh, I didn't. You know, again, we're not out to like do anything, it's just an observation, but it was a significant observation because it was. There was a, there was a lot of flowing water, we're not talking, we're not talking just standing mud, I mean, we're talking flowing rivers of water. Across this property uh into wetland, so with no protection. Well, a small berm had been breached, but that's, that's what we observed. Uh, understood, I want to also just, oh, please, go ahead.
I was just curious about the uh source of the um oil discharges, do you know where that came from?
Uh, I actually do not.
Uh, I actually do not, and I was on site today, I'm actually, I'm actually in Bath now, but I was in Reed Field today. Uh, just walking through with our civil uh, contractor. Uh, because I too was curious as to why those measures were not installed. Uh, I'd been there several times and I saw, what I saw were, uh, they're called ECM burns. And there are actually, we walked the site today. There, the entire site is surrounded by berms, this is inclusive of the wetlands area in the center. So, if you actually clear the brush. Because it's pretty overgrown in those areas now, uh, because it hasn't, it hasn't been trampled upon, basically. Uh, there are berms, there are maybe two areas where the berms, uh, what I'll, what I'm gonna say is they they blew out. Somebody ran over them with a tractor. Uh, but there are berms everywhere, they're uh. Two feet wide by one foot high. Um, and what he and I discussed was uh, going back in, went. Back to finish the access road, because the access road does not traverse the entire site. It actually stops down towards the second pad, the equipment pad. So, uh, and then at that point, whoever needs to go out into the field. To change a module, should it break or replace something, replace cable or conductor. Or uh, anything like that, uh, would would use a. You know, an ATV or something smaller to get back to that site if they need to bring equipment down. When he comes back to place rock and finish finish the road, the access road. He's gonna check, he's gonna rebuild some of those berms.
So. I'm really just interrupt you, sorry, I I agree with you, Josh, that we did, just to make it clear to the board, because they weren't there, and just to make it. Clear to you, uh, Chip and I did observe the berm you're describing that goes around the perimeter of the property. And we also observed it had been blown out in a few locations, as you've also just described. And that is the concern, what we what we did did not see, which is in the permit. Is the silt fencing that's required along the. You know, to sort of cross lateral, I I guess I would describe it sort of uh. Perpendicular, you know, to the property, so a- as you're going downhill, so per- down slope, so it slows. You know, catch anything that would flow down the property, okay, none of that was there, that's, I guess that's what. That's the point of the observation, so appreciate the berms are there, the berms. Need to be made, they they need maintenance, obviously, you know that, um, but um, yeah, we we definitely saw that. That's an issue, and and it's, I can see in some cases, it may not have been an issue, but given the rainfall this summer, I mean. It's it hopefully you noted it when you were there, I don't know how often you get to the site, but. Um, we were, we were there on a nice sunny day and it was, it was flowing like a river, so and that wasn't. You know, it wasn't even raining, so.
Yeah, uh, we're seeing that on all our sites up here, uh, it's just been, as you, as you already stated, it's just been an incredibly wet season. So it's really slowed progress on every front. Uh, so, when we discussed the silt fences, he was explaining to me, and I could go back to him with this, of course. Uh, is that the? The D E, because he has a lot of experience in Maine, it's C L T, he's a, he does a lot of work in this area. Uh, and he was explaining to me that the D E P likes the would. The the, I asked about the silt fences, silt fences, and he he said that the berms would be. Preferable to the silt fences. That's what he, that's basically what he told me in his experience with going through inspections with the D E P. Um, so, again, I'm I'm happy to go back to him and we could.
Well, we are fortunate to have an expert in the matter on the phone with us tonight, so. What is the answer, Don?
I was just about to jump in on this one, so yes, um, actually, um, I will agree that. My back to my days at D E P, I much prefer erosion control mixed berms over silt fence. Um, silt fence just does not hold up, um, I mean, yes. It sounds like you did see some places where the berms need maintenance, but overall. Berms perform much better than silt fence, and I would much rather see berms there.
And you don't throw them out after.
Correct.
You don't take them out and there's no waste, so that was, that was kind of the, that was the the takeaway from my meeting with him on site. Uh, because uh, on every site I've been on up here, I've got to bring my muckle locks. And I've been uh, paddling through, paddling through my visits. Uh, uh, it's just so wet, so that in if we could take that section of your report. And if there's any more clarity that you need, or if you'd like me to go back to him and discuss things. Um, I think that I'm I'm more than happy to do that. I will say one other thing, and that is that during construction, and this is an unfortunate. Unfortunately, a a typical, uh, a typical occurrence is. Uh, the guys working on site, they don't care at all. About where they're going and where they're driving or anything, so. We are, we try to clarify uh, the the limit of work and the boundary. That's first off, uh, and we also try to get the fence in first. Or at least the posts in first, or at least flag the area. So that uh, it's very clear uh, what sections they can, they can mow over and not mow over. In this particular case, uh, there was so much traffic between the. Edge of the tables and the fence. Uh, there was so much buggy traffic uh, with guys moving back and forth that. It really tore up, it really tore up the earth, that's what you saw. It 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 created ruts where there were none, uh, and then the water just found its way and it makes those worse. Uh, because it's, it's actually. It's on a hill. Um, so. That is being remedied now, and that I have found. In past, on past projects is the ground cover that goes in. And the hay that they they throw down, they throw down pollinator, the seed, and then the hay. And that, what that does is that helps the site recover. And uh, with some grading, which is what C L T, we went over that today as well. Uh, with some grading, it helps the sites begin to recover. And you do, you will not see that that type of rutting happening once everything starts to grow, I can't rush the growth. I wish I could, but I can't rush the growth, so. Uh, I think this is one of those situations where uh, we're gonna have to keep, kind of keep an eye on this. And see what adjustments we need to make uh, as the uh, as the as the growth, as everything grows in.
Yep, so I I, Josh, I think you're, I'll just interrupt you, not to interrupt you rudely, but my my uh. So thank you for that, um, I guess I would, you know, my my purpose of writing it in the observations is is uh, was really. You know, I think you've addressed, you've addressed the rationale behind it, and I don't think anybody here would disagree with your. Uh, with your analysis, I think that that makes perfect sense, and I think the concern i- is more just from a. You know, not what we expected situation, right, I mean, it is what it is, I think we can all agree to that, you know, it it's happened at this point. But a couple of things, one is the the berm, the berms definitely have been breached in a couple of areas, and they need to be repaired and maintained. And so that that is an expectation that would happen, I believe. The second thing is, we did see um, areas of oily product, I mean, we have photographs of them, I have more photographs, I did not provide you yet. Which I'm happy to do, I can also show you exactly where it is on the site, you need somebody to show you. Um, but there's absolutely evidence of some oily product there, that's, you know, I mean, Chip was there with me, he can. Um, also, uh, state that I I, you know, I don't think it's hopefully not a big deal, but it doesn't need to be, you know, just uh. Uh, corrected, um, and and the uh, the 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 third issue though is is just that, you know. Again, the only reason it's on the list is for one, from visual observation perspective, but two, is that your. When you, when you put your applicant, not you, because you weren't here, Josh, but when Michael or others put the, or maybe you were here, I just don't remember. Um, the uh, the application was submitted, it was extremely clear from power engineers, I believe, or Stan Tech, I can't remember, one of your consultants. Who pro- provided the schematics for the construct, for the permitting, you know, it was extremely clear in those documents that these. Additional erosion and sedimentation measures would be taken, and they were not taken, so while we can agree after the fact that. This is, uh, this is what's happened, that is not what, this is not what you proposed. So that's why it's.
Understood, and I figured that's why it ended up on the report.
Right, so how we deal with that, I don't know, but that's that's just a a fact.
Well, I think that, uh, you know, in in my experience here is that. We have to recover, and that's basically what we've been been trying to do over the last month. Is we're recovering, uh, again. I can't apologize enough for the lack of, because I'm an over communicator and I take this very seriously. I don't wanna, I don't want to ever breach our permits in any way, shape or form, because I know. It's bothersome legally, but it's also, this is your community, so I take this stuff very seriously. Uh, uh, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So you you, in your application, you had this erosion and sedimentation. Plan, which was not followed, but. Aren't some of the measures that you were supposed to take still applicable? Um, you know, creating swales and other things to break up what Henry has described as this river of water. Because the cover crop alone won't do it.
Uh, I'd have to look, I'll be honest, I'll have to take a deeper dive into into our uh. In into the civil plan, I took a look at it, but I'm gonna have to look at it with uh, with W S P, with the uh. The engineer of record.
We're supposed to construct grain of swales. And other ba- sediment barriers and other things like that to control water flow, which would seem to me to be still applicable.
Most definitely, absolutely.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that, I think there there are two things going on here, I think that there were measures that were installed. And there were measures that were installed that were destroyed, and then there were measures that were not installed. And I think that uh, in now, looking at the site. I, we could, we could look at the site and go, okay, now we need to install X, Y and Z. Uh, we've installed the pollinator and the ground covers to allow growth. And then we'll make adjustments as we need to make adjustments. Uh, I'm, like I said, I I I don't know, uh, there's, I can't roll back the clock. But what we can do is make it work now. So that that's, that's the, that's the plan, that's my plan anyway, is to make sure that we're whole here. In terms of installations.
Appropriate for the company to put forward a remedial erosion and sedimentation control plan. That um, the town could could look at um, as you're unrolling it. Because obviously, what was in the application wasn't completely followed. And we do have a circumstance on site now where there are issues uh, with erosion and sedimentation. And um, if you could take a look at the existing plan and then propose how you're going to address it. Um, I think that would be useful to us.
Fair enough.
Yep. And just, and not to, not to uh, belabor this point, but. You know, if this was, if this was what I would consider typical construction mess, uh, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Um, but I hope you can appreciate, Josh, uh, and and hopefully you observed it when you were perhaps there. Um, I mean, there was a, there was a, and for the planning board members, and Chip can can also provide some perspective to the witches, but I mean, there was a lot of water on this property. It's not like this was, you know, this was a fully saturated. Uh, flowing water situation on this property, and yes, that's unfortunate with the weather, but that's really what the problem is, is that it's, you know. Uh, creating an an extraordinary circumstances, Josh, for you to work with, but regardless, those are the circumstances you have to work with, unfortunately, so.
Un- understood, and I will say this also, that there hasn't been a site I've been on where we've had to make changes post-construction. We've made, I've had engineers back on site to take a look at problems we've had at sites we finished a year ago. Uh, for this very reason, because when you change the terrain. Uh, especially when you're removing trees, in this case, we didn't. But when when you remove the trees, you're you're changing everything. So um, I'm I'm happy to take another look at this and uh, with our engineer of record. And with the civil engineer and see what else need, see what else we need to do uh, to make sure that the site is uh, is stable.
Yeah. And and before we move on, just, I I don't know if you got down to the very bottom of the property there, but that's where. One of the breaches was that goes into that wetland pond and the wetland area at the base, so I would focus your effort on that, on that space as well.
That's where we stopped the talk, yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um. Any other questions from the, anybody on that topic before we move on to the next one? So the next topic then is uh, just, the 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 good news is these get easier, Josh, so that's good. Uh, the the next, the next topic is um, is basically just solid waste management, again. The application described particular procedures and processes that would occur for. Management of refuse and sort of management of the waste products and construction materials, et cetera, et cetera, doesn't appear that that was. Basically followed, um, uh. There, the site, uh, it it was quite a mess, including some dumping of concrete, which you probably observed yourself. Um, as well as, uh, as well as, as you can see in the pictures that I sent, but many other, I mean, just walk around there for a minute or drive past it even on the road, you can see it. Uh, you know, so basically, uh, we had asked uh, Sincartha to clean it up actually quite a while ago, and uh, it still has not been done. So uh, you know, that's just, I think that's just kind of where our perspective, and you know, again, this is not a. Deal killing issue, but it's a, it is an issue, and we we do, we don't seem to be getting a lot of uh, action on that issue, so hopefully you can provide some comfort here.
Understood, uh, so again, uh, the last few times I was on site. Uh, this is after uh, Mill Creek, after Dan had left. Uh, and we, that that was a big recovery, there was big recovery time there for the E P C, that was a very unusual situation. That aside, uh, I took a look at the site and there was stuff all over the place, outside of the fence. And I asked them to clean up, so they have been actually incrementally. Picking pieces up and putting them near the Conex boxes, which. Is more preferable than just leaving them all over the place like teenagers. So, uh, it's a work in progress, uh, I was there today, and it's, it each day. There's more stuff that's removed, uh, I talked to the E P C, I talked to the electrical contractor. Uh, to make sure that uh, at least every single day, they're taking stuff that uh. Uh, that is, should not be there, boxes of hardware, pipe, um, concrete. Um, and moving it carefully to where the Conex boxes are. So at least it's not scattered all over the place, there is material there that is still usable. So it's not, uh, they do have dumpsters there today as well, they had two dumpsters and they were filled up. So it's a, it's a work in progress, and that will definitely be. Uh, that'll be completed uh, before we sign off on. Before we witness test, frankly, it's gonna be completed in the next few weeks. So that's uh, yeah. What's that?
Are you gonna cover the tree planting too as part of this?
Yeah, we're gonna get to that.
Okay.
The subject you you noticed it, and I'll confirm it. The one very problematic place we found was in the middle fenced off area at the very top. There seems to be a rather large berm where there was quite a bit of concrete and other. Who knows what was under there, but I I think that berm has to be dealt with. It's buried material that shouldn't be there and shouldn't be buried, so that's one observation that hopefully you'll be able to cover.
Yeah, Josh, if you look at my photo deck.
Yep.
It's, I don't know if you have it in front of you, I don't know, it it's um. It it's where it talks about solid waste one, it's the photo on the bottom left there. And it's on the inside fence, so it's that top of that inside wetland, without a sort of U-shaped fence that comes through there. Uh, the double fence, I'll call it, the inside double fence.
Yep.
So right on the inside of there, you'll see a large area where concrete was dumped, um, but also. Um, but also there's a, there's all kinds of stuff buried in there.
Okay, I'm gonna have to address that again tomorrow. When I'm there.
Looks like it was just, you know, pushed up by a. A backhoe or something, innocently probably, but it needs to be, you know. Just, just to draw your attention to that, that's good.
Noted.
Um, the next, the next dish, anything is with weight, the waste? Nope. The next issue then is uh was just the panel height, the application. At a ten-foot panel height uh from ground surface and um. Um, um, you know, we, we observed that the height varied from. I would say there was one that that I don't think we saw one that was less than ten, we did, we didn't check every single one, Josh, obviously, there's, you know, a lot of them. Um, but the ones we did check, uh, there was definitely inconsistency. Um, some of them uh were, you know, even thirteen, fourteen feet off the ground surface. Um, totally understand that uh your perspective is probably that they uh, you know, the the. There there's fluctuation in the, in the. Access point service or, you know, how the ground surface is, but um, you know, even if you grade though, if you grade that area, you know, you're, you're dealing with heights that are. Uh, up upwards of four feet above the permitted height. So um, I I really don't have a solution for you there. Um, I'd love to hear what the board thinks about that, but um. That is uh, that's too high.
Understood. And I know that uh I I've seen it, uh, again, in my experience, I've seen it on other sites. I could only offer an explanation like I did in the email, I think I sent you guys an email.
Yeah, we all, yeah, just acknowledge it.
Okay, so I and I have to stick to that because that's basically uh the the long and short of it. What what are challenges in installing uh along table lines? Uh, you know, a a table is, you know, twenty-five, thirty feet long. Um, and it has to meet up with the next table. So that we don't cause shadowing uh on either table. Uh, in order to do that, it's, it's almost like you're, you're building a house of cards. So you're gonna get flapping along the the uh north-south. Uh, or, I'm sorry, the uh, no, yes, the north-south slopes. Uh, if you look at the, if you look at, I could send you guys some drone shots, you'll see that um, you know, it really fluctuates. Over the course of the terrain and there are times when uh the panel heights uh. You know, are very high and then at other times they're where they should be and even worse, they're slightly lower. And it's just the nature of the beast. I'm not sure what else I could say. Uh, the grading plan was followed. Uh, CLT and I discussed that today, uh, because we were looking at some of the heights. Um, I would say that um, there is not much I can do about it now. Or the EPC can do about it now that everything's installed. Uh, without uh greatly affecting the installation. Uh, and I think it's uh, it's some, unfortunately, it's a, it's somewhat typical. Uh, during uh solar installations, I've just seen it happen all the time. So um.
That's to me that, you know. Being a solar company, you must have known at the time the permit was issued that these kinds of things happen. And, you know, it makes me wonder why we didn't talk about it then rather than after the fact. If you knew that this problem was going to occur, we should have had that conversation. When the permit very specifically limited the height of the panels to ten feet. So, you know, I guess my question is why, why didn't that happen?
I I think that was a mistake on on our department not communicating well enough with with Josh's team and the construction folks. When we filled out that application, we were simply asked for the height of the panels. I I don't know how ten feet got put in into there, but as I recall, the ten-foot limit was something. That was not a a specific condition, it was something we we put on ourselves. And essentially shot our ourselves in the foot there by including that in our, in our application and again.
The ten-foot limitation, and so, you know, it it also suggests to me that the company didn't really read the license, didn't read the permit, because it is in there.
In the, in the conditions.
In the permit.
Absolutely, Michael. And I would also, I would also point out, Michael, that, you know, solar is not. If this was, you know, just to, just use an analogy, and you know, if this was, I I don't, I don't know really what the solution is here, but the, i- if this was a. Construction project and somebody's putting up a house and they exceeded the height limitation of the permit, that's a significant violation, this is a significant problem. So, and it usually results in some action, so, you know, this, this, you know, it's not. The town has height restrictions and height ordinance and and that you, you were approved for a certain height and you didn't follow it, so. Um, and you, what Josh is saying may be, may be true, but as Paula correctly points out, that's something that should have been. Noted and discussed earlier. I mean, this is, you know, we've had, we've had many situations where people come back to the board after the fact and try to get a variance request or something. And, you know, the reality is that rules are the rules and if you, you, we can't, we can't, we're not responsible for you. Not reading your own application and your own decision process, uh, and and, you know, we can't. It it is what it is, it's not in compliance with that, so there has to be some resolution here, but the resolution is not gonna happen tonight. But uh it's important that you understand that this is a, a point of, point of concern.
You know, this is Jack, it's ironic that, you know, we're having somebody who built a shed that's two feet high take down their shed. And now we have, you know, hundreds of panels that exceed the height limits apparently. And something should be done. I mean, that, this was not only in the application, but it was discussed at the hearings. I think several people asked about the height of the panels.
I I need to apologize, ten feet is not specifically in the condition that I thought it was in, I'm looking at the, at the fence height, but it is specifically in the application.
Right.
Yeah, let's write, Paula. They.
And we approved the application as amended, and the application was for ten feet.
So.
No one, no one's disputing that there, that there was a a height requirement of of ten feet. I was simply stating that it, you know, it was something we. Put in our, our application and and wasn't specifically called out in the conditions, and I think. Um, I think there was a a miscommunication there. When the permit was provided to the company building the project and I, I clearly there was. Um, yeah, clearly there was a lapse in in communication there. I also don't believe that there are hundreds of panels that are above that height, but Josh and and Henry can correct me if I'm wrong.
Uh, I'd have to go back and really uh, you know, hit it with a laser and see what we're looking at from different points. Uh, you know, measuring each one is. Uh. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's, it's, it's worth it at that point. Uh, I think measuring from a point uh, the, from uh, the top of the hill. Measuring down, hitting it with a tape measure, you know, it's always a work basically, but we could certainly check on that to see what. Uh, what percentage of the site is above the height restriction. Uh, but I think that in the end, uh, I'm not, uh, it's unclear to me how we can resolve that. Um. Without uh greatly impacting the installation that is just about finished. So I'm not, I'm not looking, I'm not making excuses here. Uh, I'm just letting you know what I've seen in the past, uh, and what typically always happens, so um. I'm not, I'm not sure what else I can say here, yeah.
I could, and uh, understand that I work with various towns, I do work in two towns and. I've worked with others that have looked at our ordinance and asked a lot of questions, and one of the questions has been. Because a lot of the installers and bigger companies don't like our ten-foot height. And it was done for the purpose of screening these panels from. Roads, other houses and from views, so just a suggestion in terms of consideration and working together. Might be that the board require you to plant some higher trees in the areas where these are higher, and it wasn't hundreds of panels. And I think Henry would agree with me, there was probably more in the tens or so. But if we can identify where those panels are located and maybe in front of there. The uh height of the trees that are planted, I think right now is four to eight, four to six or so.
Five to six.
Five to six, maybe that that in those areas where these panels are occurring, that that be increased maybe. Six to eight or eight to ten, I don't know, but that would take care of maybe the concerns. It's not good, but doesn't sound like the panels are gonna change, so maybe, you know, because of that. In those areas, the screening trees be higher, and that's just a suggestion to you and to the board to consider.
I, I think one of the, Josh, I hear what you're saying and, you know, uh, I will concur that it's. I don't think it's, I don't think it's all of them, I think most of them, you know, many of them are in that ten, close to ten foot, ten and a half, something like that. I don't think we observed anything lower than that. We, we, like you, we didn't measure every single one of them, that would be. Double's work, we take days. Um, but we did, particularly on the northern. I'm gonna get my bearings correct, western side, I guess it is. Uh, uh, you know, on one of the edges, there was definitely, was definitely higher, um, consistently higher along that whole edge and then, and then, you know. I I I think if you do as you've suggested to check it, I think you get a percentage, I think that's a good suggestion. I think, I think also maybe some other reconciliation of some kind probably needs to be discussed, um, I don't think. I don't, I don't really wanna say too much there, um, but uh, you know, I will just say our current ordinance. Um, does require, you, you do not have to abide by it, because you're a grandfather, because of this, you may consider something like this. Our current ordinance requires screening, uh, full screening from all residences and public ways. Um, and uh, that is, that is uh, you know, you're, you're, you're doing that on one edge, I believe. Um, so the chip, chip suggestion is perhaps a good one for the board to think about, maybe not result tonight. I'll stop talking, see what other people think, but there's other, other things we could consider, but I, I. I also concur with Jack's comment earlier that, you know, we have a situation where there was a small, a small height exceedance in some other project and. You know, that, that's uh also, also an after the fact uh request to 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 be forgiven and and um. It wasn't, so. We can't be, uh, we can't be inconsistent in our applicability of our, of our rules.
Understood, and I I I would, uh, I, I'm open to uh discussing this further, I I thi- again. We're, you're going to be living with this project. And I think that, uh, you know, if we need to plant taller trees in an area, uh, that's fine, you're talking about the western edge, I think. There's a. I think there's a setback there. Um, so when you enter the site, you make a, make a hard right and you go down that. The, the area between the tables and the fence, is that, is that where you saw the most egregious heights?
It's the far western edge towards the top, I think, Henry, wasn't it?
Far western edge towards the, 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 the top.
Top of the hill.
You know, the top, the, the, that top third or half of the construction project, yeah, on the right, on the right side as you go in.
So, I hear you. So I think uh it's interesting, because they're, they started just to, not to jump subjects here, but they did start to plant the trees. Uh, they have, uh, I'm not sure how many, but they, they're, they're on their way. Uh, they've got at least twenty or thirty trees in at this point, um, and they're going to be moving towards getting. That finished up in the next week or so. Um, there is cover from uh, from. From the north side. Of the field, there is cover, there is tree cover there. So, uh, and those trees will grow, you know, those trees grow pretty tall. So it is possible that, and then on the, on the western side of that setback, there's basically wooded area. Am I correct, Chip? Am I dreaming this or am I, is this real?
But the field and the clearing and everything is set back from there, so there's, there's quite a bit of distance from the forest, forested area. To the fence and then from the fence to the uh panels. So again, the thought, the thought would be to screen it with higher trees, maybe extra trees or whatever. But I I think there's gonna be a problem there for quite a while and, you know. I think in good faith, if we could come to an understanding there, that might be a way to do it. Without physically considering moving the panels, I don't know.
So it sounds like, you know, if you're going to do an assessment of how many panels um exceeds that ten feet and where they're located. Um, it's gonna have to happen pretty quickly if they're already putting trees in. The opportunity to put taller trees will be lost if, you know, if we don't look at that immediately. So if you could move ahead and do that assessment and then um. Uh, consult with Chip about the locations um of trees that have gone in and those that haven't gone in. And if it's possible to put some higher, taller trees in, um, in the areas that require it.
Uh, let me, let me take, let me take a look at that, I'm happy to do that.
So let's, let's keep talking about the trees since you, since you breached the topic, Josh, we're gonna go right into it. Uh, so it sounds like you are making progress to that, our, our. Our concern or not, it wasn't a concern, we were just wondering when you were going to do that, uh, you know, with the condition and our read requires to be done and and sounds like you're doing it. So I think that satisfies our concern and that the tree should be of the correct height. Obviously, we need to talk, sounds like we're gonna talk about that a little bit more. Um, and um, um, and also uh just noting the, the, the spacing and requirement and things like that, just making sure that's all complied with. Um, in the, in the, in the application, you may, you may pause. Uh, on that, uh, as Paul is, was sort of perhaps indirectly implying, uh, just, just very briefly and until that, maybe that next step discussion happens, just so you don't have to. Replant or do something different if there's some decision that's, you know, made, or or maybe you come back with us. Um, with another suggestion, you know, maybe, maybe we could put the onus on, on you guys to come up with another suggestion about how to. Um, how to uh improve the screening or something like that as a, as a reconc. As a, as an additional step that's, you know, beyond your, beyond the current permit requirement, but but in in lieu of the additional height issues that we observed, something like that.
Uh, I agreed, I I think also uh on the western side of that fence, it's not scheduled for trees. I believe this trees stop at that corner.
They do.
On the north, northern edge.
Correct, so it is.
Down that side.
That's correct, that's what I'm thinking, is that we could, we can run down the other side. Uh, with, uh, and I don't, I'm not sure how quickly we can do this, I'm gonna have to check into that before I say anything else. However, I think that's the ant, that would be a good solution. Uh, I'm not sure if you saw some uh. Height issues on the eastern side. Um, but uh, we could work that, we could work that the same way. So let me go, let me go back in and take a closer look at this. Uh, and see and really, uh, and we'll circle back on this and figure out like what, what can work. In the timeframe that we have that will satisfy uh, satisfy the town.
Okay, great, thanks.
What sort of trees are being planted, by the way?
Um, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna, I'm having a senior moment here, they're, they're evergreens, but I'm not sure what the exact type.
Okay. Part of the obligation is to not only plant them but maintain them. Right, I assume you understand that.
Understood.
Um. Anything else on the trees or the height? Anything else on the trees or the height? I can see you're thrilled with excitement. Um, the next, uh, the next issue, uh, the next two issues are perhaps not that complicated. Um. Listen, I don't think they are, but who knows? Uh, but fencing, uh, looked like the fencing was pretty good. Uh, was was the right height in general. Um, because of all of the erosion, it it is filled in particularly on the access road side, Josh. You probably even noticed that when you were there. Um, and um, you know, we just want to make sure that, uh. As I'm sure is common with some of your other projects in Maine and and perhaps elsewhere. Um, you know, we want to make sure there's uh, animal passage underneath, small animal passage capabilities underneath. Um, that area, that area where your project is, is a lot of wildlife, so it's important to us that that's. Uh, maintained, uh, that access is maintained so somebody doesn't get trapped in there or and it can escape, um. From, from predators and things like that. So, um. Um, it looked like there was some, uh, it looked like generally, uh, it looked like it had been accomplished, um, in height and in 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 that bottom gap. Um. Uh, but but there are areas where it's already filled in and because of the erosion issues on the site that we discussed earlier. Um, it, um, on our, in multiple locations around the site, there have been, you know, even the fence postings were now exposed and the concrete was coming up and. It was kind of, kind of a mess, so, um, you know, just. An observation probably needs to be regraded or something.
Exactly, and that is a, that's on, that that will go on our punch list. Uh. Uh. Because that is a grading item. Uh, I'm gonna have CLT handle that or, uh, at least have Mill Creek have CLT handle that. Um, and, uh. My goal is to punch, uh, you know, punch list, generally speaking, um. No one gets paid till the punch list is done. Uh, so, uh, that this will be on the punch list, it will be checked and double checked. And it'll be cleaned up. So, uh, I want to make sure again that we're, we're compliant.
Condition in the approval is, um, six, six to eight inches above the ground surface.
Correct, and I know some areas, I know there were some areas that were, that are less than that. Yeah, so, uh, and it's just about, you know, going around, uh, and making sure that it's clear. That the ground, there's no rocks, there's no earth, that's, uh. That that, that that, the men, those dimensions are maintained as closely as possible. You know, over time they will change. Uh, so, uh, I may go back in and see if there's something we could do that's a little greater than that. Uh, again, many installations have this, uh, this type of, uh, this type of, uh, gap. So I think that, uh, we'll take, I'll have to take a closer look at it and see. Uh, what we can do to make sure that it lasts over time.
Yeah, I mean, I think in some areas you could probably increase the gap to. To prevent that, um, maybe not the whole thing, but in certain areas where it's, you know, maybe looks like it could be more problematic, but also, um. You know, I don't know if it's, I don't know if there's some sort of maintenance plan for the fence as well, but, um, assumingly every few years, somebody could check it or something like that, just to make sure it's. You know, stays in general compliant, you know, that may be another solution to 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 the, to the challenge.
We can definitely have our own M partner, perhaps, but take a look at that for sure.
Something like that. I don't know if others have other thoughts, but. Um. But in general, the, the, un- unlike the panels, the fence was very consistently seven and a half feet all the way around the property.
A B.
No.
Um. Along with the fence, uh, again, this was not a, this is not a requirement, this was a question. That, uh, I, I don't think it came across that way. Um, and it was really for the board just or and for the town to consider. Um. There's, there's very little, you know, ponded water, uh, because of, it's on top of the hill in East Reedfield there. And if there was a fire, there's, there's that pond which is, uh, just behind this property, which is, uh. You know, a great source of water, um, as are many of the other water locations. And I just didn't know if. Uh, Lee, Lee Mank had any concerns about if there was a panel fire or something. I don't even know what the procedures would be, Josh, in that circumstance, but. Um, um. You know, it's high, hopefully highly unlikely would occur. I just didn't know if access to water was of any concern at all for the town. Um, because of the fencing, it creates it very difficult to get water on that property and if, if, if another, you know. Proactive gate on the back that was secured, you know, was, was even worth considering just because of the. You know, obvious access to the, to the water source there, but, um, but if not, that's fine. I just thought I'd bring it up.
Um, I could speak to that quickly. Uh, I think that, uh, we've had, we've had projects with several gates. Um. Unless it's, unless it, uh. Unless it's a necessity, an absolute necessity, we try to avoid it. Uh, we've, we try to avoid it because people break in. To our sites and they either hurt themselves or they damage the equipment. Uh, we found this on several times. We have cameras on site. That monitor the site. They're not twenty-four hours, uh, twenty-four, seven monitors, but they're there, uh. In case, uh, so we can, we can see who's on site if something should happen. Those are at the main, they're on the main path. So they're at the front gate. Now, I've had sites where people have broken chains and gone in. And have still, and have actually accessed. Equipment that's live. To pull the copper. Now, that's not gonna happen in Reedfield. But, uh, I think that, uh, it's always, uh, to me, more than one point of access to a site. Like this is, is always a dangerous thing. The second thing is that when the site, the site will trip. If there's an issue on site. So I have never seen a fire. On one of our sites. What I have seen is equipment. Either, uh, faulting out or shorting out and, you know, melting. The site trips offline. So that takes, it basically takes the, it takes the danger out of the rest of the, rest of the site. Uh, it's a built in measure just for that reason. Um. We could take a look at it if you want to. Uh, I think that it would be interesting to see what Lee has to say. About it. I don't think he, he walked the site with Ronnie. Uh, and he didn't, I don't think he raised this issue. But, uh, I'm certainly open to discussing it.
Yeah. Okay.
Henry, uh, I have a comment on that because I've walked that section. And it's even in a dry year, it's very wet. Between the field and Carmont Pond. The best access i- is through the gate that the Greater Grosso Utility District uses. And they go, roads that goes down close to the pond.
On the backside, the eastern side, yeah.
Right.
I don't. I, I, I don't think that's good access through. Um. Where the solar panels are.
The backside, okay, great. Yeah, again, it was a question, not a, not a, wasn't just thinking it through. Um. Uh, the, the ground cover, we had just a couple more minor things. The ground cover sounds like you, you've, uh, you've, you've started that, I guess, we were. We were, um. So that may be, you know, I guess I would just say, you know, you need, you know, we'll wait till you give us our, your revised sedimentation and control plan. Um, or measures or record, you know, remedial plan you're going to provide. Um, but also the, the. You know, if there's any grading to be done, it seems like that obviously wouldn't be done in areas where you already did the, the planting. So, um, I'm not, you know, just. Uh, I don't know if you've done the whole site or you've done some of the site or, but that's okay, but it doesn't, you know, it, that's your, your decision. Um, and in your sequencing, of course, uh, um, but I think it's important to us that it's, uh, obviously. Uh, completed before, uh, the, the condition of use is issued. So. Just noting it. Um, the last. Anything else on the fencing or that stuff? The last issue was just that I think, you know, it is what it is, but the, again. The, the permit had the CMP routing in a particular location and the. Um, and the, uh, the, the reality of the CMP routing, uh, when it was con- completed was quite different. Um, and, um, I just didn't know. Um, I noted it with Chip, uh, I didn't know if, um. That was, you know, that is a variance from your permit. I didn't know if that was a. If that was discussed with the town. I, I, I personally don't disagree with it, uh, it's new location, but, uh, I can see why it was done that way from CMP's perspective and your perspective. Perhaps in the homeowner's, the landowner's perspective, but I'm just wondering procedurally, like. If that was discussed with the town or if it wasn't discussed with the town, uh, don't know.
I'd have to look through, uh, emails, but, uh, I think that there were discussions early on because, uh, once again. Uh, I wanna, I wanna be crystal clear with. Anything outside of the fence. Uh, that affects. Uh, the, the landowner. Or the neighbors. So, uh, I'm pretty sure that we were approved. For the, the plan that you see in place, um. The landowner, uh, was adamant about not having it traverse. From the. Eastern side of, uh, the main road to across the street. Down across the front of his property. And having kind of poles in the middle of his fields going down the access road to our path. So, I mean, there were, there were several, there were several accommodations made here. Uh, but again, I'd have to look through my emails to, uh, to check that out.
Uh, I, I recall speaking with Chip on the phone about item and I.
Happened with that?
Yes. At the time, this was in the middle or early last year, um. There was a email that came in, I believe I shared with most of you, um, and it was a discussion by CMP. I think it was also about the three phase wire where it was gonna be and. Discussions with the owner, how would, uh, screen it more if it went behind the bar. Um, but I do remember those emails and I think they were shared with some of you. I could go back and dig it up again. Uh, but that was brought up at the time, um, would this be acceptable?
I, I don't, perhaps you forwarded them. I don't, I don't recall it, but it just strikes me as something that. Not that there's a particular issue with it, but it does seem like the. You know, the approval needs to be consistent with the reality and if they change the route. Um, I think that the, the permit should reflect that. Um, you know, which would be a procedural issue for the planning board, but, um, it does. Strike me as an inconsistency that should be corrected in the permit.
Have you, have you had the site survey, Josh, or is that part of, uh? Endpoint of for the construction or during the prior construction?
So obviously we survey it upfront. To, right, uh, at the end of the project. The site is resurveyed to make sure we're in compliance. In terms of the acreage used for the project. So it's not, it hasn't happened yet, but it will.
Yeah. Perhaps I would suggest Paula that administratively that this issue be incorporated into that and then maybe the board can use that as part of its review. Before the COU to. Uh, be- before Chip issues the COU before, you know, as part of a, you know, revised review. So, so it can be documented, the exact acreage and then exactly where everything is for the record.
Yeah.
Again, I would just, you know, to, to me, it's a. I don't, I don't disagree with the outcome, Josh. Uh, it's, it's more about the, again, just I think it's just a communication issue. But it sounds like you did talk to the town, somebody did, so that was good. Um. Well, I think we've been very detailed here. I, I don't have anything else, I don't believe, but, uh, other, other people may, but. I certainly appreciate your time addressing these issues and you can see there's some things we still gotta work through with you guys, um. But it feels like, feels like there's some very actionable things. And feels like you should, um, uh, be delivering some things to us for review. And for action with the communication with the community. Um, as well as, you know, revising your, you know, after you talk to WSP, revising the, the. Uh, plans for sedimentation, things like this. Um, and suggestions for, uh, the height issue. So it feels like, so, anyway, we run through our punch list. I don't know if you have anything on your punch list. That's probably a good question to ask.
No, 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 we're, I'm here to, you know, we were here to make sure you feel more comfortable with the, with the project. So. We'll, we'll take these, we'll take everything it, uh, that we've talked about into consideration and we'll move forward.
I would, I would note on the, on the waste side, the waste management side. Um. Obviously, there's been considerable growth on the property. There was a lot of waste on the property, as you probably observed, as you noted, you observed, um, which we've observed for a long time, but now that the grass has grown tall, it's hard to see some of it. Um, I would just say that. I'm gonna guess that not all of it's gonna be obtained, captured, maybe is the right word, uh. You know, uh, unless the, in, and you know, until the grass is, until the. Winter is over or, uh, post, post winter. So it sounds like there'll probably be some cleanup, I would suspect later on. Uh, in, in the early spring or the next, uh, when, you know, sometimes when the O and M contractor comes out or something like that. So just observation.
If they see something, then they'll take care of it, but, uh, my plan is to have them. Uh.
Hour.
Work, work through the brush and pick up what's there and get rid of it. So.
Great. Back to you, Paula.
Uh, thank you, um, all very much, um, Sin卡法 folks for that. It was very helpful and will, I'm not gonna run back through the punch list. I think we've spent. Sufficient time and. Lot of detailed discussion about it and if you, um. Can address those items that we identified. And get information, um, and revise plans and so forth. Uh, back to Chip, uh, there may be some of these pieces that the planning board will take another look at, um, before. Completion, but, uh, get those pieces to Chip and he'll make sure that everyone has them, who needs them. So again, thank you very much. We appreciate all your time. Uh, it's been very helpful. I'd ask if there are any other questions while, uh, Sin卡法 is still here. Uh, Conservation Commission members, anything that you would like to comment on or ask? Planning Board members? Okay, no, thank you again very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time as well.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Josh.
You got it. Take care.
Bye, talk to you all soon.
Oh, thank you for coming. We appreciate having you here.
Are we there or we?
We have a few more miscellaneous things. We've got some minutes in the cup.
Hello, Jared. It's been a while, Scotts.
Yeah, it's been a long time. I think we'll lose there, not much. Good to see you.
See you from us.
Let's see. Yeah, yeah. Um, so just a couple of miscellaneous things I wanted to mention and we don't need to spend much time on these, but. Um, I do want to mention that we have the new solar application. There are a couple of hard copies that still. Uh, need to be picked up by somebody.
Don and Mr. O'Connor.
Okay. And it's unclear, uh, at this point, um. When that application will be scheduled for an initial review and. Okay, all right. Well, uh, the first meeting in September. Yeah, okay. So, um, uh, Chip needs to complete an initial completeness review and, um. You know, it's a significant enough application that, um, we all need as a board, I think, uh, enough time to. Uh, more time than we normally would need with an application before that completeness reviewing. So. Stay tuned on that and, uh, Chip and I will be talking about scheduling it.
Just to let you know, Paula, I won't be at the September meeting, it's the date, I think it is.
The twelfth.
Yeah, I'll be in Alaska. Birthday days.
Better place to be.
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
Be back on the nineteenth.
Um, and that, that reminds me actually that, um, I did want to remind everybody that, yeah, it is important, um. Uh, particularly with, you know, we have almost a full roster of members now, and to keep track of when everyone can be here and when they can't. It it is uh, really important that you let uh, either Chip or I or both of us know. As soon as you know, or if you're not able to make a meeting, um, you know, we all have other commitments from time to time, but it's very helpful to know. Uh, who won't be here as soon as possible, so just a reminder for everybody on that. Um. The um. Uh, main municipal training, I had mentioned that at the last meeting, and John and Brandon went ahead and did the August one, John has his little certificate. Uh. There are, um, oh, I told, I told Brandon, um, what needs to happen with that is that you just forward that to the clerk, to Kristen Park.
Sure.
And it just, uh, so it becomes part of the town record that you you've done the training. And uh, George, there are um. Sessions coming up um, in October and in December.
Okay, good.
Uh, one of those uh, is an in-person training at main municipal in Augusta, and the others, the December one is remote.
Okay.
So.
I would do one of those, did you guys do this online this one or? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just online. Right, yeah. Miss, that's separate than this or is it the same thing, Paula? The one you, we.
It's the same thing, it's the same training, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a basic training for planning board members and appeals board members. And, you know, I put out for everyone else that, you know, it is, um, it's especially good for new members.
Yes.
Um, but if there are other members, um, you know, veteran members that are also interested, it's a great refresher as well. I've done it a couple of times and Peter, I I expect that you've you've done it also, but. Um.
I never remember.
And if you're interested, um, you know.
Well, I'm not, but I guess it's a requirement, so I'll do it.
Um, uh. The planning board and appeals board members um. Are supposed to uh, to take the training at some point and forward that certification to the town office, so. Um, the main municipal website has the training dates on it, and uh, the way to do that is to get in touch with Angelica. Or Teresa in the town office, and they can do the sign up so they can do the payment um, upfront for you. Um, the December meeting, as I mentioned, is remote. Uh, the October one is at MMA, and it's an hour longer because it includes dinner, so. The choice is yours.
Is the town there for that too?
Well, I I assume it's part of the uh, part of the uh, the cost, so.
Ramen noodles.
Yeah, there you go. Um. Uh, I did want to mention that the Roy application, uh, that we considered, actually, I think before the new members came along. Um. The Roy's took their request for a variance to the Board of Appeals last week and it was denied. And uh, the planning board had made a decision to wait and see how that all shook out. Before we took final action on their application. So I sent an email to Mr. Roy, um, over the weekend, actually. And um, told him that we wouldn't take this issue up to make a decision on their pen- pending application. Until September, um, but that we needed to hear from him by a date certain about, you know, what they were going to do going forward. And if they want um. The structure, their options really are to lower the height or to relocate it, so. Um, he'll have to consider with, or I mean, they could always withdraw the application, but I do think they want shed, so. So we will see that again, but it won't be until September in all likelihood. Um.
Paula, it just, I have a question on that, it um, administratively, they can appeal. If they so chose to appeal it, uh, they could appeal it to. Uh. The court system, uh, correct, but if they did that, would the, would the planning board still need to rule before that that occurred?
Yeah, we, I mean, we haven't, we haven't made a decision yet on patient. When we do, you know, they could appeal that decision, but they can't do it until we actually issue the decision.
Okay, I was just wondering the sequence of events, cause. Yeah, usually the variance, usually they go to the appeals board after the ruling of the planning board.
But I I mean, there are two, two circumstances under which they would go to the Board of Appeals, one is if they wanted variance, which in this case is what they were requesting. And the other situation is if they are appealing a decision of the planning board, and I suppose that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, you know, if we, if we deny their, their application, um, you know, they could appeal that to the Board of Appeals. And then, you know, eventually possibly the Superior Court if they so chose. Um. So we have two sets of minutes, uh, to approve. Uh, Jack had made some suggested edits and I added a few and sent that to everyone uh, this weekend. So it's that version that I'd like everybody to be one. And focus on, I mean, bring hard copies with me, but um, so. Uh, there were Jack's edits and my edits on on that version that I sent out this weekend. And they are the minutes of July eleventh and July twenty-fifth.
Yep.
So, um, anything on the July eleventh draft, any additional edits, comments, questions? And now July twenty-fifth.
Good edits.
And if. What was that?
Good edits.
Um, if there aren't any additional comments, I'd take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July eleventh and July twenty-fifth as amended.
There. George seconds. Further discussion? And all those in favor?
Jack, yes.
Don, yes.
Henry, yes.
Yeah. All right, um. Unless anyone has anything else, I think that is the end of my list, anyone? Jack, you have anything?
No, thanks.
Thank you all for entertaining this incredibly detailed meeting about this, uh, all these microscopic issues, but it was uh. Important to go through with this company, so I'm glad we did it.
All the, the work you've put into this and and Chip as well, um, it was a lot more complicated. Than a lot of the applications that we're dealing with, so. You know, I certainly appreciate all the energy that both of you put into this, it was extremely helpful from my point of view.
Yep. Well, we got another one coming, it's gonna be good.
Um, great, huh? Okay, thank you all, we are adjourned.
Good, thanks, have a good night, everyone.
Hey. Good night.